Brian, would you lead us in prayer? I'm having a little cold issue here and you're a good prayerer, so.
Okay.
You give me.
Thank you. Father, thank you for this gathering. Thank you for this time together, Lord. We would ask that you would lead, guide, and direct our steps this evening. We thank you for the folks that are here, leading this community, Lord. I ask them that they always reach out to you, Father, before making any decisions. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Father.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all can tell I've had a bad month.
Bush.
Here.
Fugit.
Here.
Penael.
Here.
Robbins.
Here.
Woolen.
Leader, motion for approval of the minutes?
Make motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. ... The president has called Coach Little.
That's Coach Cal.
That's my main coach.
Bingham. Yes. Bush.
Yes.
Fugit.
Yes.
Penael.
Yes.
Robbins.
Yes.
Woolen.
Yes.
Before you get started, Mayor, you know, during the storm, I laid home on my big fat eyes and the mayor, he really went above. I mean, he worked his tail off, the city's street crew did, and the Pimble Water Company did, and I just really want you to know how much I appreciate you all did a ... I mean, Scotty went from daylight to dark. I know that, and you know, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Everybody appreciate it.
Second. We'll call Mr. Rollup this time for Main Street update.
I second everything that both said. We ...
Everything.
Everything. I wore a blue tie tonight. It's March, time to get serious. We have worked out a deal with the Bell Theater to show the ... all the UK games this March in the theater for the public, and we gained permission, we were granted permission today from the UK Associate Athletic Director to show the games. So that was pretty cool that he responded and said that would be great for the city to do that. As long as we keep winning this weekend, we'll play at 1 o'clock Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Has Sean got his permission from a little bit yet?
We haven't seen permission. I'm still trying to find the other five people that weren't. Anyhow, as you all have seen or know, I've been out of town the past couple of weeks traveling for work. I was in Carrollton, Kentucky, two weeks ago for the Main Street Winter Conference. It was a great conference, made a lot of contacts there, and in a room full of 40 to 50 Main Street Directors, it was pretty cool that my state director kept referring to me the entire time, and a lot of people were like, "Who's this young guy here?" And I just kept talking, but she, we have a great relationship. She's going to come down to Pimble to really teach everyone what Main Street's about in a couple of months. We learned about pop-up retail shops, the importance of social media and how it works with the Main Street program, and some new national Main Street policies. And then I also learned while I was there that the trip that was leading up to going to DC with the state Main Street Directors, that they were paying my $200 registration, but then I was stuck with a $300 hotel room bill that I didn't know that I was going to have to pay. So I got out there and I made it work, paid out of my pocket, which brought up, my state director said, "How much is in your travel budget?" And I said, "There's $500 in there," and it was spent in probably the first month of July in the new fiscal year. That was something that was put in in the last budget. Now, what I do with my job is I go out into the state and try to promote Pimble, and I think that I ... my grandfather used to say, "If you don't toot your own horn, it's not going to be tooted." But I think I've done a pretty good job getting out into the state and letting people know that we are here, we do have our hand out, but we're willing to work and we're ready to get some things done. We've made great contacts across the state on that $500, which we've borrowed out of the general account a few times. We've had to, I've paid all my gas out of pocket, all my food expenses out of pocket. The Main Street Board has stepped in and they've paid a few hundred dollars toward registration fees and such. But for someone like me to travel out in the state or outside of the state and really push Pimble, sell Pimble, make the contacts network like I've been doing, I need some help. I don't know where it's going to come from or what I can do, but it's, the $500 isn't adequate, and the state director kind of laughed when I told her that it was $500, and we've made do with what we, what we had to do. But I feel like I need to, to come to you guys and let you know that we have, that I have spent a lot. And then on top of that, I said, "Well, what are, what are some of the Main Street Directors making across the state?" And they did a report in 2012, a survey of all the different programs. The average pay is between $30,000 and $35,000 after benefits. I have my W-2 and it's under $20,000 for this past year. I'm not here trying to beg you all for money, and I was fine when, when I was cut in, back in July, but I do feel the need to stand up today and, and ask you guys to see if there's somewhere that we can find some money to help me out. As I travel, I'm spending my own money and I'm not breaking even very, very often. So I just wanted to myself ask you guys for, to consider that, and the new budget workshops will be coming up, and all you guys have been so supportive, I just wanted to say that myself. On another note, the Main Street program could not be in better shape than it's in right now, and at the state level, they are really, really looking to Pimble and using us as an example to other communities across the state. So I'll step off my soapbox and sit back down. We have a lot to talk about tonight. I hope you all will all join us at the Bell Theater throughout March to watch the games.
I agree with Jacob and, go ahead.
I have a comment. I know the process of conferences just for registration, not travel, and not food, and not hotel. As the Kentucky League of Cities, conferences are very expensive. Sometimes they're $250 and $300, and all you've done is registered to go, and you have not paid mileage, you have not done your hotel, you have not done your food. And, and yes, I think this is something that needs to be looked at. He is actively promoting our city. I was very honored when small-town Pimble was one of two Main Street programs that was asked by the state of Kentucky to go to Washington, DC at this last heritage conference, and that's, that's an accolade.
That is.
And really, you can't pay people what they're worth if they're working, because they work hard and they work above and beyond. But I, I think we do need to do a better job, especially on travel and for the next budget workshop, I think we need to look at these items very closely.
I promise that will be some of my focus, and for myself also, there's not even hardly any money there for myself to travel, and I know I'm in sales, and if I'm not out moving around, I'm not getting much done. So it is pretty much the same thing, Jacob's job, if he's not out moving around, going to meetings, then he's not promoting and doing what needs to be done. On that note, I'm, I'm, I would entertain a motion if you all think we need to pay Jacob's motel bill. I'm perfectly fine with it.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Bill, second by Mr. Bush. Any discussion?
No.
Call Rob.
Bingham. Yes. Bush.
Yes.
Fugit.
Yes.
Penael.
Yes.
Robbins.
Yes.
Woolen.
Yes.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Juan.
We've got the second reading of the flood damage prevention ordinance. We had the first reading last month. It's pretty basic. It's the, I think everyone has a copy of it. Pat makes them.
I make a motion, we approve the second reading of the flood damage ordinance.
Second by Mr. Bush. Any question? Call Rob.
Bingham. Yes. Bush.
Yes.
Fugit.
Yes.
Penael.
Yes.
Robbins.
Yes.
Woolen.
Yes.
Number five, discuss the present, I call, ordinance. As you can see, Anna's had a bad week too. She's got alcoholic ordinance and her computer crashed this week, on top of all the snow and the flow we had, computer crashing. We were so brain dead, we didn't even catch it until Brian called and said, "What's the alcoholic ordinance? You're going to keep all alcoholics out?" But anyway, in 2005, the city passed the alcohol ordinance in reference to the wet/dry or the moist boat that they had, and when they passed that, they, in section D, section 310, item D, when it says "location," they inserted, "Only premises doing business directly on or adjacent to US 25E shall be eligible to make use of a license under this chapter. The location of a premises desiring to make use of a license under this chapter shall be approved by the city ABC Administrator, which is Bill, and conform with applicable regulations and ordinances." Well, when I first got here, one of the first things Bill told, and we talked about several things, and he brought to my attention that, Mayor, you know, if anybody flies for an ordinance or a license according to ordinance, I have to turn it down.
That hadn't been changed?
No. So, so, in the meantime, if we turn it down, somebody down, then they've got to sue us.
Excuse me.
And then they've got to sue us and, and go to the state and get a, you know, and get it over, I guess overturned, and then we wind up in a lawsuit. In the meantime, I've asked John to do a little research on it and get his ...
I've had, I've taken two different approaches. One, I researched it myself, and I don't disagree at all with the mayor says. Research shows that, I could say a lot about it, but the gist of it is, it's, the city would lose. I don't see any way around that. Then once the city lost, then you could be possibly assessed with, you know, repercussions of that loss for violating ...
State law.
The state law. The other thing is, I called the General Counsel for the ABC Board, and he and I spoke, Bill and I spoke about it, and I've called him a couple of times, and he, he's in a position where he cannot give me legal, his legal opinion, but reading through the lines, he basically says, "Yeah, it's unconstitutional." That's, you know, I'm putting those words in his mouth, but that's pretty much what he said. So how it'd work is if a entity files for it, Bill looks at that ordinance, he reads it, and he says, you know, "I can't do that." It's turned down, and there's a lawsuit. The ABC Board will have a hearing. At that point, it would cost time and money, you know, I'd have to attend to defend it, and then at that point, overturn it and then have to rewrite it. Based on my research and my discussion with the General Counsel, I would recommend that the simple way to do it would be to simply amend it and delete the section that causes it to be, in my opinion, against state law.
And why that, why that's so, guys, so we'll make sure everybody understands, when they had that election in 2004 or '05, I can't remember the year, that was a citywide election. That wasn't just election on the highway.
It wasn't a precinct election.
Right, it wasn't a precinct election. It was a citywide election. So, you know, that's a, this ordinance is for the whole ... Now, what has brought this on, you know, a couple of things. Bill bringing it to my attention, which I was glad he did, and we've all known it for some time, and the second thing is, I've had a, somebody call and has requested a license. Now, they've not followed through with it, they've not come and got a copy or anything, but I certainly don't want to be facing a lawsuit if he does. I mean, it, you know, it's somebody that's looking to do a business here, and this is one of the things he's interested in, so I just think we need to amend it. I don't want to get everybody up in arms and think we're going to, you know, start having bars and this and that. I just think we need to amend it and make it illegal.
Well, how did the lodge get theirs?
Adjacent to 25.
Adjacent to 25.
And it wasn't ever tested whether the real property abuts the 25. The question that some people would raise would be, "Well, the actual restaurant, the structure doesn't, but the property does." You know, we're using the word of men, and I would even go as far as say, you know, it just needs to be ...
I thought that was a change.
You know, it needs to be ...
See, I was told it was changed.
No.
A couple of, I mean, council members thought it was. Been a lot of discussion on it, I think, but I don't think it's ever. And that's all I want to do, is I don't want to get into a lawsuit if we get to the point where somebody wants a license. And I've had several people ask me about, you know, why, you know, why would you all do that and passing that little ordinance, and, you know, if they did what they did, it's, I mean, I just want to correct it.
It would be, it would be almost impossible to defend.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be difficult for me to formulate a defense on, on why that, because I, you know, from a legal standpoint.
The city cannot pass any ordinance or anything that supersedes state law.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask the attorney what, what process we should use?
I think it's as simple as, you know, presenting, you cannot, I can, we can reprocess one with the word "process," or you can present that as, you know, we can amend the existing ordinance, and you can have a first, I would assume you can have a first reading now if you choose, or you elect, you know, the documents actually, they type, but that is what it is. It's, we are asking, or I'm not asking, but what's proposed is the fact that this needs to be returned to how it should have been in the beginning when it was passed.
The, the ...
Amend it to an ord, the existing ordinance is what it is.
Right. Amend it to the existing ordinance and remove the, the location restrictions.
Specifically, section 3.10.
Yeah.
3.1.
No, I'm sorry, 3.11.
11.
Letter D.
D. Okay.
And really, change really not anything else.
No, I mean, I've read rest of it. Rest of it, I think, is pretty much a standard state.
So you're, you're deleting D as that, I mean, to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
3.11D.
3.11D.
Then I make that motion.
And I second.
To align ourselves with state law.
And delete that. Motion by Pat Bingham, second by Mr. Woolen.
I'll get the final version to you by, of the next reading.
Any questions? Guys, it's no, nothing more bigger than that. I know it will probably get blown up bigger than that, but I promise it's no, nothing no bigger than that. I mean, it is what it is, and I'd like to be sitting here telling you, I've got apple peas coming out here tomorrow, but we don't. Anyway, call Rob.
Bingham. Yes. Bush.
Yes.
Fugit.
Yes.
Penael.
Yes.
Robbins.
Yes.
Woolen.
Yes.
Hotel update. The developer, Don Phillips and Maurice Eldridge, will be here Friday, the 13th, to do onsite, look at the project and see where we are with them. March 27th, we have a meeting scheduled with Tourism, Finance, Governor's Office, Parks, the judge, myself, Rick Nelson, to discuss their role in it and to, basically discuss the Burke Combs property. I will probably recommend that, that they give us that property for the projects that we are in the process of doing for them. It's kind of what, is the direction I'm going to go with that, and I think we can pull it off, I think. But that, I want to say this, that is not to say that the hotel project is back on board or it is telling you, we've got, we're back talking with them and we've got the state willing to meet with us, and for one time, I think we're, probably at one time or another, we have met, or they have met with the parks, the finance, the tourism, the governor's office. At one time, we're finally going to have everybody at the table, so they can't say, "Well, let me go back to parks, let me go back to finance, let me go back." You know, everybody's going to be at the table, and everybody can give their opinion and where we are, and hopefully, I'm still on this six-month timetable that, you know, if in six months, he cannot tell us for sure his plans or assure us he's moving forward, then we're going to go another direction. That's going to be my recommendation to the council. Any questions? Discuss city hall exterior renovations. I think as we take the lead and role in trying to get everyone to fix up downtown, I asked Anna one to ask, "So what about our building? You know, we've got several cracks in our exterior, I don't know what you call that, boards or whatever, but we need to fix ours first, I think, to kind of set the example, and I just, I guess I want to get your all's approval. We don't have any prices yet, we'll get some and probably, probably won't do it till up in April till it warms up, but I think we need to be, you know, lead by example and fix ours first before we start asking everybody else to fix ours, because I just want to make sure you all concur with that." Any questions on that? Discuss and approve the agreement regarding the zip line project.
Mr. Mayor, are eight, nine, and 10 all together?
Eight, nine is, we need to do a little ...
Talk about 10?
Yeah, we've, we've got some stuff for, for young 10 there. Jacob's got some stuff there we're going to pass out on the zip line.
This is an email correspondence between Burgess Carey, who's the developer of the zip line with Boom Trace. This is just kind of an update on where they stand.
It is.
After I printed this out, I heard from him again today, and actually, one of the guys working with him has already, he's closing on a house downtown, so they're, they're moving forward.
Wow.
Really. We had asked and we didn't hear back, whose house? All right.
Okay. We, we talked about the zip line a little bit at our last meeting, and ... Is the numbers of the project costs and stuff on there, Jacob?
Yes, sir. Clear down.
If you have any question, the projected numbers and the cost of the project, they are, we've been told they're going to start laying cable hopefully this week. That means that they'll be laying cable on the ground to lift it up in the air. They have to have their platforms and things in place and up in the trees by March or April?
The end of March earlier.
I think at the end of March, because once the trees start blooming, it'll kill the trees, so they're, they're kind of under a timetable. This weather's really hurt them too. They told us, I think, today that they are shooting for a, what they call a soft opening July 1, meaning that they won't have everything done, but hope to have it operational by July 1. We talked about last time that we would kick in $100,000 to help manage the project. Now, the, to me, the icing on the cake with this is, is we're also within our negotiations with the state on the Combs Forestry Building. They're willing to move their whole operation here. Their company's called Steps. They have 18 to 21 employees, and they want to lease that building out there. So they do manage, they do, not only do they build these, but they then do maintenance and repair work on existing ones that they have done, and we talked about that last time, anywhere from South Carolina to West Virginia, they've been building and repairing these zip lines and canopy tours. So we talked about it last time, everybody was pretty much in agreement that, that we do the $100,000 of our tourism tax dollars, and we have a letter from the tourism that's saying that they concur with it. We will prepare a, probably a resolution to have them to pass to get back to us, and all I need from you guys, unless you have any questions, is a motion to do it.
A motion to approve, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, that the monies we are talking about are restaurant tax monies, and they are already in the bank.
Yeah.
And held by the Tourism Commission. This is not new money.
Yeah, and it's not coming out of ...
They're not held in tourism. Well, they're held escrow by us.
It's tourism dollars.
It's tourism dollars. So this is not new money. This is money that's already been held.
Any other questions on the zip line?
And I still stand by my motion. Motion to approve pending tourism approval. Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rob. Any questions?
Bingham. Yes. Bush.
Only if I get to write it first.
Fugit.
Yes.
Penael.
Yes.
Robbins.
Yes.
Woolen.
Yes.
Mike, some things never change, do they? All right, the next one is the zip, the, I'm sorry, the sign for the state park, which would also help promote the zip line and the park. This one kind of came to me from the chairman of the tourism, and I, I agree with it, I'm on board with it, because promoting the park, people up there that are going to the park to eat or consume alcohol or whatever they're doing up there, you know, that's, we get a piece of the pie, so I think that that, and I'm, what I'm asking you to do here is to approve the spending, and we will have them bring back their spending cost of the signs before we do a final dollar amount. We just need to concur with them that we're going to do the project.
Got one question.
I'll make a motion.
Got one question. Where's the sign going to be put?
Right there by the golf course.
Okay, okay, good.
Mr. Bush makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Rob, second. Any other questions?
Bingham. Yes. Bush.
Yes.
Fugit.
Yes.
Penael.
Yes.
Robbins.
Yes.
Woolen.
Yes.
I need clarification on this.
Any way you want it.
Okay. And I agree. On this park, how do we want this in the minute? Providing money, in the letter it says $100,000, but what are we, what is this motion? Up to.
Up to.
Up to.
That's what I said, we'll bring the numbers back before we approve and sign off.
All right.
Because they really don't know what they're going to ...
True.
That's right now.
That was the question I had. That's the reason I was kind of limbo.
That's right now, I put that number up there.
Okay. All right. Got you.
All right, last thing is the theater. As we, I don't know, the theater's kind of, me and, I don't want to say limbo is the word, but Mike's kind of kept the theater going for the past 10 years, and it's, it's something that I think is vital, as I said probably a year and a half ago when I came to the council to tell you all this for sale. I think it's vital for the downtown. I think it's very important for the future of Pimble.
Well, we're lucky to have the building.
And before I go any further, we're lucky to have somebody like Mike, who 25 years ago had the initiative and foresight to revive the mud and everything else that was sitting in the thing. How long that thing's been, Mike, before we did that? 15, 20 years? With the mud still in it?
1972 was flooded in '77, and it was purchased in '88 from the corn paddel.
So it's sit that long, and when Mike then started redoing it, I was married at the time, and I can remember going in there, it still had the mud in it, you know, they had it coming to get out at the time, so. But anyway, guys, we have something very special there, and it, I don't know, it, it's has a little extra special meaning to me. Jacob keeps saying it's my baby. Well, I was here when we, when we completely redid it, and this is one of the things that I campaigned on, and I'm compassionate about it, and there's a few of us in town that have been like that from day one since we redid it, Mike being one, and I don't want to take any of the credit for the work, because Mike and Bob Taylor did it all, and I was just here signing, signing checks and signing off, but I think, this is the projections that, that Mike gave us, and Mike's a stoop, a bookkeeper. As you can see, the Bell Theater, projections on the expenses for 2012, 13, and 14, electricity, the gas, and the water, and the insurance, and the mortgage, we've got it broke down. We even break it down on a per-month average, an annual projection, and if you'll see there in red, the projected annual expenses on average is $33,300. Down below it, the income, new heights, average per month rent is $650. Mike's agency will begin to pay $650. Shelley Salon pays $400. I think Mike has rented the other office space.
Yes. For $350.
For $350, so we put that in there. And then the theater rental, that is for birthdays, special projects, different things on when we start getting additional things going and really promoting the thing. So...
Well, we can't lose our theater.
No, we can't. And I think it's vital part to make it part of Main Street. And there's a hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars owed on it. And...
How much was that? I think you're right.
One thirty-six, nine twenty-four. And if you'll see in your, in your expenses up there, we've got that figured in. We've got the mortgage, we've got the maintenance, the insurance, the, I mean, other than unexpected expense, I think we've pretty much got it covered. Mike has done tremendous amount of work over there. I don't foresee us having any major issues to have to deal with. And I am going to recommend to the council that we take the theater back, that we put it under the Main Street for Jacob to book and manage events. We'll set up a separate account for the theater, for the income and to pay the bills with. It'll be separate from Main Street so we can kind of keep up with it. And I'm also going to ask that we, ask Tourism for forty thousand dollars to purchase the projection equipment. Go ahead and pass it out there. We've got the cost on the projection equipment. And also twenty thousand dollar startup money, which we will do some minor maintenance, painting, maybe replace some carpet. We talked about maybe doing some work on the bathrooms. But there's nothing major needs to be done with it. I mean, we just, that's just, I just felt like we needed some startup money to, to get everything going. And then if you say, well, Mayor, what are we going to do? If you look at that Bell Theater project report there, this is what I feel like we can, some of the things we can do with it. You know, as far as booking events and the multi-use first run movies, dinner theater, concerts, plays, meetings, private parties, whatever, you know, we can have pretty much whatever we want to with. Every time I talk about it or Jacob talks about it in his Main Street meetings, people are just at awe to think that we've got a downtown theater, guys. People, I don't know if you realize, no, we've really got something that people would love to have.
Jacob had a little good job with this, Mayor.
I agree. I agree. Thank you, Bill.
So when we were in Madison, we were in Madison, Indiana, as part of the side trip from the Main Street Conference, and we went to a locally owned theater there. That was a, I mean, that's four hours from here. I said, I'm from Pineville. And they said, oh, that's the Bell Theater. I said, yeah, but I mean, people do know about the Bell Theater from far and away from here. So I think with the right promotion that we can really latch on to that and take it to another level.
Even though we may be taking ownership, I know Mike Crockett pretty well, he's still going to be attached to it. He's not going to let that thing go. He's got too much time and energy and money into it. It's kind of one of his babies.
It's one of his children.
One of his children. Darren's agreed to stay and help with it. Darren's got a lot of knowledge of the sound systems and some things that we've got over there. And, you know, we're not, I don't see any reason that we would have to ask somebody and say, well, what are you going to do to the church? Well, we ain't going to do nothing. If they want to stay behind, I mean, if they want to leave, that's up to them. There's no need for them to leave. And they say, well, sure, and that's their call.
I've got one question on the mortgage. Is the mortgage the old rates or...
Two point eight.
Well, that's dying open my mouth.
Two point eight. And I've asked, I've asked the first state to transfer that to us. Now, what I would like to do, since we're kind of in the middle of the month, is we've got, you know, there's a lot of paperwork we've got to do. We've got to transfer mortgage. We've got to, you know, probably have to get some leases signed with some of these people. We've got to contact our insurance company and see about adding it to our policy. So Mike, what I would like to do is maybe shoot for April 1, us taking it over and giving us the next two or three weeks to get everything in line. Is that okay?
I'm sure we'll have a smooth transition.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Mike's been great. I mean, he's always been good.
So you're not going to raise any of these people's rent or nothing like that?
No, don't feel like we'll have to. And that's going, you know, it's going, as you can see there, I mean, it's got a positive of about three thousand projected income, and hopefully Jacob can generate us some more revenue there to, you know, to, but you know, there might be a time, guys, that I have to come back and say, hey, we're going to have to ask for some money from the restaurant tax. But if we get twenty to start with, I don't see us, you know, spending five or six thousand dollars on our initial repairs. That'd give us a little cushion to get it started and going with and...
Got to start somewhere.
Got to start somewhere. And this is, it's something that I really feel strongly about. I really think we can develop it. I mean, it's going to take a lot of work. We're going to have to, we're going to have to promote it, and we're going to have to, you know, do some things with it.
Yes, sir.
If I could interject one thing, just talking about a multifunctional facility, the word is getting out even more what we're able to offer the area. We just got a call today from South East Community College wanting to have their graduate award ceremony April the twenty-seventh. So that was, that's a good shot in the arm for the Bell Theater.
That's nice.
Mike sent me a thing this weekend. It's over in Virginia. They're, was it the Lee Theater? Was it the... They had a list of things that they were doing like the next four months, and they've done a theater restoration. And then they had everything in the world on there from music to, one of the churches was sponsoring the movie, the, what's the movie? I've not even seen it yet.
God is Not Dead?
Yeah, God is Not Dead. You know, so I mean, just several different things you could do, and, you know, different people may want to sponsor something for children or, you know, senior citizens or whoever, you know. So I just think it has a lot of...
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Any other questions? Call her up.
Bingham?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Do you get?
Yes.
Penale?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes.
Wollen?
Yes.
Let me add to that. We're going to, we're going to also ask for forty thousand for the projection equipment and twenty thousand startup from the Tourism to get that going. Okay, I just want to make sure we got that in there. All right, moving right along. Yeah, the, one other thing that I've got in here, I just made you all copy of it because it's time order letter that they send out, and pretty much just says, you know, they're looking at possibly renewing some contracts and whatever, but it's not specific to us. They talk about different areas. Back in the day, I remember, you know, we used to negotiate, but those days are now...
Long hard, but still...
They're just kind of, I mean, when you don't even have a phone number where you can call locally, it's pretty hard to. I spent literally two hours today trying to, but I just wanted to bring up to y'all's attention because I get a lot of people say, hey, you've got to make, we've got to make sports channels, or we got, you know, can you get this channel? Well, we probably really don't have a lot of say so anymore, you know, especially now that time order on business. We're probably really limited now. But did y'all get those reports? Did you ever see them?
Yes.
You know, I don't know, I really don't know what, what you did that you take it over yourself and like Robert's thing. But I just put that in there for you just in case. One other thing, I've got a request from Riverside Baptist Church to have their, says, as you know, it's here, the Bell Baptist Association of Churches with Riverside Baptist as the host church, sponsors the crosswalk as recognition of Easter. With your permission, we will meet in the Pineville Community Hospital parking lot at two P M. on April the fourth, twenty fifteen, and carry the cross to the courthouse steps where we will have a short service scene, and with Bruce Walters, our D O M., is our speaker.
I make a motion, we'll allow it.
Motion made by Mr. Bush. Second. Second by Mr. Robbins. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, so I want to have Mr. Fugge. Did you get anything?
Yes.
Let me get a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I moved on too fast now.
Bingham?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Do you get?
Yes.
Penale?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes.
Wollen?
Yes.
All right. One thing I did want to bring up is the, we have one truck that's four-wheel drive that has a snow plow. And I don't think we're going to get much more snow this year, but I think it's something that we need to keep on our minds for, for, for the kind of budget. I think maybe we need to look into a plow or two and maybe another salt.
We only have one truck?
We have one, we have two plows, but one four-wheel drive truck that's got a plow on it.
What's the other truck?
It's a two-wheel drive.
I look, we only got one four-wheel?
The other one broke. It broke. Brian broke.
I agree, Sean. We definitely need to look at that for sure.
With a four-wheel, with a plow, I have any of this, or it's too small for the...
Too small. Yeah, it doesn't do a great job.
All those, you know, all those sidewalk snow throwers would help round the squares.
Yeah. For the businesses, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea, but, but it's just something I thought we should, we should look into and bring it up.
Didn't realize we just saved one four-wheel drive truck.
Well, we've got more four-wheel drive trucks, but we've just got one four-wheel drive truck with a plow on it.
And solver.
So that's, yeah, and one sprayer.
So when it gets stuck like ours did on that Saturday...
Right.
From ten to three. And they're calling, that's what was wrong.
Now, that water company helped a lot, so.
They did, they were very good. They were extremely helpful.
They saved us.
We held a lot of snow. We moved a lot of snow. So I got, yeah, so when we did the budget, that, you'll have to remember that.
Yeah. Well, us over people...
He's got good notes.
Mr. Bush?
I have nothing, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Since you missed the last one, being in Bahamas.
It was nice.
I bet. Mr. Robbins?
Nothing.
Miss Pat?
I want to say the same thing that...
Say it like I said it.
Well, I don't want to say it like you said it, but I did have a number of people call, and they just wanted publicly the street department, the police, the fire, the utility workers, just their appreciation shown to them because they really pitched in, especially the utility with their trucks. And I had a couple of calls for a city clerk, Ina Robbins, because she stayed beyond hours, and they were able to find out the, the height of the water on the gates and the flood bridge. And a lot of people out in the county were really appreciative of that because...
She looked like a little drowned drunk duck after measuring.
Well, she may have, but the people, a lot of people called me and says, please thank Ina because some people thought, well, am I going to have to move when it got up to a thousand sixteen and, and the seventy-seven flood was one twenty-two? And then, I didn't know this, but a lot of people stayed, like dispatchers and our fire people, and a number of people stayed in the fire department one night when the water was real high, all of them pitching together on, on time. In case we did have to close the flood walls, and I certainly want to thank them for giving it their time and pitching in.
We caught them in. We were, we were very close to closing the gates and evacuating wells, and I think they didn't realize that, but we were...
I can imagine with that flood gauge that I knew from Ina.
You know, there were a lot of blame pointed at different ones, but it was Mother Nature, you know, everybody did what they could do.
Right, they were all right there. And then I want to, I want to make you aware of another accolade that the city of Pineville received. The Kentucky Public Service Commission has formed, set up a, a group to have a system to, to define what compliance, state compliance is with management. And they have set up this group, and it has representatives of the Division of Water, and it has the Kentucky Interstructure Authority, the K I A, and a couple of engineering firms, and two utilities in the state. And one of those utilities is Mr. Bill Bunch from Pineville. So I, I'm very proud that we can add to the large cities.
What was that?
I don't know who the other one is. I just, I just read that on the Kentucky Rule Water Authority, that he was one of them, and I did not pay attention to the other gentleman. But I thought, I was very proud to know that our system commanded that type of appreciation.
Well, yeah, because we, we don't have that type of, you know, we just need to make...
Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Bingham. Mr. Wollen?
We got a ton of potholes.
Yes.
All over this...
We were talking about the day, I was running around the day. And guys, that's something, you know, if you're riding around, you start seeing, if you want to make a list and let us know, I mean, we, I rode around the day with them. There is a bunch.
Well, from my house, I weigh a hospital, there's tons, so.
Of course, you know, we won't be able to start that till...
No.
Another thing where that, where the truck got stuck, that backhoe came in, did tear off part of that road.
Did it?
I mean, I'm not sure if it's going, if it, how bad it is, but it was part of the road bit.
When we blacked up it, we're going to have to look at it and see, it's pretty good on this stuff. It did, I mean, I remember seeing it a bright day, tore part of the road off when we got stuck.
But I just know a bunch of potholes all over town that were right there.
Stop making me laugh. That'd be, that'd be good for you to make it so like...
Thank you.
Anything, anybody in the audience got anything?
I do.
Yes?
Do you have any, any idea whether the city of Pineville is going to file a formal complaint with the National Weather Service? I know that our judge executive was fairly upset. The two of you spoke during the event, and National Weather Service had their estimations wrong. Their numbers were way off. I spoke to several meteorologists with W K Y T and W A T E, and I had pretty much put the word out as well that people were not really, shouldn't be as worried as, as they were, and it was based on National Weather Service numbers.
I hadn't really thought about it, Brian. I know the judge did, and it probably wouldn't hurt for us to do it. I know the judge really sent out a pretty strong message to the conference office, and it probably wouldn't hurt for us to do. I had questions all day long about it, and I was very relaxed and even went home for probably four or five hours. Of course, I was feeling bad, but they kept telling us we were going to crest at a thousand seven and, and, you know, the water doesn't, you get on the road in Newtown to a thousand eight. So at eight o'clock, we were at a thousand eight, and then Ina and I were out, and all of a sudden, I get this call from her. She's in a panic, and we've raised three foot in one hour. So, I mean, they were calling us, asking us if it was true. So, you know, there, there is some major problems there. I mean, you know, they will always miss it a little bit, but man, they missed that one. They missed this one really bad. Mike?
Biggest problem is there's only one gauge upstream from here that works correctly.
Yeah.
One gauge on the drainage of the Cumberland River above Pineville. They don't have enough information to be able to tell us what's going on. There are a couple of, there's a gauge at Cumberland, there's another gauge at Harlan. They don't work correctly.
Yeah.
There's no gauge on Clear Creek, there's no gauge on Yellow Creek, there's no gauge on the Martins Fork, there's no gauge on...
There's a, there's a gauge at Blackmatt Bridge.
It's not an official gauge, and so, so there's not a system for gathering...
It's not official gauge?
No.
They need telemetry gauges like we got here where we check them every so often.
So they're making guesses in the dark about what's going to happen. The only thing they did was estimate the water content in the snow incorrectly.
Yeah.
Because they couldn't determine how much flow had come through those streams because they didn't have any gauges. If they had looked at that, they would have known that there was a lot more water on the ground in snow than they were estimating at the time, so.
I mean, in comparison, that's like, that's like saying there's a small shower coming over Fondine Mountain heading here, and it's a full-blown thunderstorm with rotation. You know, not only in media, but I would imagine that emergency services bases a lot know, not only in media, but I would imagine that emergency services bases a lot of their numbers on, on what the National Weather Service is doing, and it really behooves them to have things right, and as Mike said, you know, maybe a, a letter from, just making a suggestion, a letter from the city of Pineville, since we are, we're in a situation where you were just a few feet from having to do a major evacuation, it may have been small on a scale of New York, or, or Rhode Island, or Boston, but for this area, that would have been a major evacuation, would have tied up phone lines, it would, and here's the other thing, Bell Dispatch fielded, and I know I did at the radio station, they fielded a dozen, if not a hundred calls every fifteen minutes, are the floodgates closing?
Right.
We were getting them, and we were trying to keep people from panicking, and of course, up till probably one o'clock, we, we weren't sure whether we were going to or not, you know, because it was racing so fast, and Jackson would increase their crest number, and when they'd increase it, we'd be almost there, and you know, they, we'd go, hey, we're already there, you know, and they go, oh, really? So, like Mike said, the judge has a plan, we've talked about it a little bit, we're actually going to have a meeting Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to meet with him Wednesday, he's going to meet with his staff Thursday, and we're going to try to get some gauges in place for Martins Fork, and Yellow Creek, and some of those places, like, we have telemetry gauge on Newtown Bridge, and we can call and get up, updated, you know, every thirty minutes, we can update it and, and calculate the rate of rise. We actually were doing, doing it the old way, Mike, we, because we weren't, you know, the stuff that we were getting from them was not right, so we were doing it the old way that my dad, and Jim Roan, and Steve Kaywood, those guys used to do it years ago, we were sitting down and multiplying the hours, and how much we're going to get from Harlan, that's, I mean, that's how we were trying to determine where we were going to close or not, and that's a bad way to have to do it, you know, I mean, when there's technology out here today that can measure it, so, yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, it probably won't be bad for us to do that, to, you know, we hope you don't make somebody lose their job, but it, it was a serious thing, and people don't realize how close we really got to having to close our floodgate.
Well, you can see now when I comment about how appreciative people were in the county about even knowing where the water level was.
And, and let me, let me address this one other issue about the flooding, now, my, my calls first started that night from airbound Kentucky Avenue, and their basements were just flooded out, and that's a pretty good sign that you've got a lot of water, because, you know, occasionally you're going to get some floods, but then when I got a call from Little Sean, that his dad's basement up on, above Tennessee Avenue was flooding, had four or five inches of water.
That's where which stayed in the seventy-seven flood during the tirhouse?
Yep. So we knew then, that, I mean, I knew then that we had some serious water, it was actually blowing the manhole covers on Kentucky Avenue up about three inches, that water had it, they were just sitting there just going around in circles.
Is that what that was, Doug, because somebody asked me what that...
There was a water coming out of the heels, and it was, the, so what happens when the water gets up, we have, you close the valves and the gates, and then you have to pump the water out, well, those pumps won't let it go out as fast as it does on a gravity flow, on a normal flow. So we, we had, you got three pumps down here at the football fields, you got one at Wild Zine, you got one up here by Arnet's.
Got one in McDonald's.
One at Newtown, yeah, one, you know, so it, and it just won't pump it out fast enough, so, but I mean, I heard some bad stories before, you know, probably eight-thirty, nine o'clock, people, everybody's basement on Kentucky Avenue was flooded, and Bow got flooded, Bow, on Virginia Avenue, I guess they did too, but when you start getting it like that, you know, you're, you're probably in trouble, you're going to get some pretty bad, bad rain, so. So if anybody asks you, more than likely, you know, are their basements ever flooding like that again, unless, you know, unless you have that type of rain, they won't flood like that again.
And the pumps have been pumping since five o'clock?
Yeah, I mean, we had the pumps going.
They were already working at five o'clock.
So, it was a little unusual, and it was, it made, it made it a little more difficult, and, you know, we were depending on Jackson going off their numbers, and it kind of made me...
You know, I agree with Brian, that, you know, people don't know how dangerous we were in.
Yeah, and we were, but we, you were within a half foot of where it was in seventy-seven when it came over the wall, you know, it, it actually went on up to one thousand twenty-one in seventy-seven, but you were within a half foot of where it was in seventy-seven, and...
Well, I know the mayor will join with the county judge expressing our displeasure with this system.
And we're going to try to get some telemetry gauges in up, you know, above us, so we can help measure water, I mean, that's what we were going on, you know, Harlan was even closer than we were in shutting their gates, they were really, really close.
Had no time to battlefield, never been so many listeners.
I think it'd be good to have an education program with our communities too, so that when they hear a number like a thousand sixteen...
I agree with that.
They know what that means for them, particularly if the river's rising that fast.
Yeah, because people...
And I think if they know those things, that a lot of them will be a lot better about that, and we can share that information.
That'd be something when we get our web page.
Do that at the Bell Theater?
Yes.
Do it, you'd be a good one, and everybody kept saying, what's the double crest? And I said, Mike Crockett can explain that better than I can, so, I know the judge said he couldn't stand it anymore, he had to call and ask you, so. I said, if Mike Crockett's put it on there, you know, he's done it. Any questions, anybody else got anything?
I make a motion, we're a judge.
Second.[1782.22]